We're good.
Excellent. So it's two o'clock. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is a work session for the City of Manzanita's council and our city manager. We've got one agenda item today. Jerry's going to lead us in that, and that is the process for changing vehicle use on the ocean shore. I'm sure Jerry will give us background for the sake of the record and for people who are listening, but this is also always, excuse me, this is something that we have already considered in in public meeting and we're going to do some work on it. Today, that is the only item. And just as a reminder, for anybody who may not be familiar with way that these work sessions are set up, they're not a time for public comment. If you have comment or questions following the meeting, council members or city staff would certainly be glad to hear from you, absolutely. But this time is reserved for us to listen and talk through something at more of a length while we're still working on it before we get into any kind of decision making or policymaking in a city council meeting. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jerry and Jerry, take it away.
Thanks, Catherine. So I actually put together a very brief PowerPoint. Help guide the discussion. I'm not a PowerPoint guy, so bear with me. It's pretty rudimentary, but Nancy's gonna put that up and advances slides for me. So if you can get me to slide one, Nancy. All right, that's bare bones, but that's what
I would say that meets the definition of bare bones PowerPoint. Congratulations.
I'm proud of it. So this is what we're gonna do for the next thirty, forty-five minutes or so, just to look at what it is precisely that we're trying to change, how we get it changed and when it can happen. I'm glad Catherine mentioned that we've already gotten this out on the table at a couple of public meetings, and I think this today is is part of the process of just opening it up and letting the public know that we're pursuing this path forward. Ultimately, it's a process that does not belong to us. It belongs to the Department of State Parks and Recreation. And so they'll be charged with creating the formal public process if there's going to be one to consider this rule change. But I think on our end, since we're the body initiating the process, it's incumbent on us to let folks that could be impacted by a rule change know that it's in the works, both to have supporters of the change come forward and help us out with this and supply some information and some insights. But also, if there's anyone out there who would oppose the change, to give them fair notice that this process is beginning to take shape. So Nancy, with that, can you go to the first or second slide? So this is the rule itself that we are seeking to change. The general rule for Tillamook County shoreline is that there is no beach access for motorized vehicles. But this rule, A O A R, that's Oregon Administrative Rule 736 oh twenty-four, oh fifteen in general, covers all of the Tillamook County shoreline and is it's got a bunch of very localized exceptions written into it. So the exception that impacts us here in Manzanita, first of all, geographically, it runs from the south boundary of Oswald West State Park down to the north boundary of Nahalum Bay State Park. So it encompasses all of Manzanita Beach and all of Niaconny Beach as well. And the the exceptions are twofold. One is the primary exception that folks are concerned about that between the hours of seven AM and twelve noon during the off season, or what was thought to be the off season, October first through April thirtieth, motor vehicles are allowed on the beach. And then there's this second exception for motor vehicles essential to and engaged in boat launchings. And I haven't come across anybody who's familiar with boat launchings happening on our beach, at least not as a regular practice. Obviously, you can launch and get out to the ocean from Nahalum Bay State Park boat launch or from the boat launch in in the Nahalum, but I don't really think there's a lot of boat launching going on on the beach. And so I'm going to talk specifically with the government relations person at State Parks to figure out how much emphasis we should put on or need to put on B. But A, of course, is the 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 exception to the general rule of no vehicles on the beach. A is the one that is really the bugaboo here. So this is the this is what we're trying to change. I remember last time council talked about this, we were sort of pre-ranging about what kind of new rule we should put in place. I think what we need to focus on is that this is not our rule. It's the State Parks rule. This exception to the State Parks rule has drawn some opposition from local residents. And so this is what we're trying to get rid of. Once we get rid of it, if the State Parks needs to do any refining of its rules to accommodate electric bikes or anything else, that's that's on them. We're just trying to get rid of the exception that allows for motorized vehicles during this limited period of time. So can you flip to the next slide?
Tom, Jerry, let me just
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, but wait, hang on. Do you want to take questions?
Yeah, absolutely do. I meant to say that. So
Okay, thank you. So Jerry, I think the only time I ever see motor vehicles engaged in boat launching on the beach would be the fire and rescue folks.
Yeah. So Yeah. And so there in the in this O A R that generally speaks to restrictions on the Tillamook shoreline, there is an allowance, obviously, for emergencies. And there's also an allowance for in certain circumstances for the operator of a motor vehicle to get a permit from the State Parks. So there's ways, I mean, it may it may be that the government relations folks will advise us that those sort of built-in exemptions, exceptions, I should say, cover the motor vehicles launching boats. But I just don't want to get ahead of ourselves on that one. It's certainly not a particular concern.
So and have you talked to anybody like Ben Cox at the State Park about whether they have some reason that they would want vehicles to be permitted on the beach?
I've I've talked to Ben and I've talked to Katie Gauthier, who's the government relations person. Neither one is offering an opinion on that. My my sense is that they're not, they certainly don't have a particular bias in favor of this restriction. They've been very accommodating and helping us approach the process so far. So I'm not getting the sense that there's a real pushback there. What I I just heard back from Ben yesterday, in fact, because I had asked him some time ago, when did this exception come about? And he did a deep dive along with Katie, and the best they can figure is that it probably came about in nineteen ninety-two, although they say it may have been around as long as late seventies. So it was essentially a carve-out of the general rule. And I can simply imagine that back in nineteen ninety-two, it might have been a thought that the off season was pretty dormant around here. I don't think at this point, I don't think the off season is as dormant as it may have been in, you know, thirty years ago.
Thank you.
All right. Go ahead, Nancy. So in order to get the Oregon Parks and Recreation Commission to consider opening up rulemaking and looking at changing rule we just looked at, they're going to look at criteria in five different categories that are laid out in a different section of the Oregon Administrative Rules. And most of the citizen input we've gotten over the actually, over the years, it's come in pretty steadily last couple of years. Most of it goes to the issue of safety. I mean, I think people in general are just concerned that you know, our beach draws a fair number of older people, people with disabilities, young kids, people who are paying attention to your dogs, people that are just out strolling, trying to have a good time, and they have enough on their hands paying attention to the ocean and not having to worry about cars zipping around. So most of the incoming complaints we've gotten touch on safety. I don't think that'll be a difficult topic for us to address either directly as a city council or from residents offering testimony when we get to that point. But I do think that what we what we want to be able to demonstrate is that we don't really have a true off-season in Manzanita or on the beach. I mean, obviously, we get our biggest crowds during the summer. But we have pretty good evidence from the amount of T L T money that flows into the city year round, that there's significant tourism activity year round. There's also obviously plenty of residents, full-time residents in town who probably prefer the beach in the off season to going to the beach in July and August. We also have, obviously, second homeowners who've come down very likely for Thanksgiving and Christmas and spring break. And we have at least three federal holiday, long day weekends during those off-season months. So there's all kinds of reasons to revisit the the notion that the beach is quiet and dormant and empty during the winter, and therefore vehicles should be allowed on the beach. And I think we'll do pretty good on the safety category. The access concerns is interesting because the way the rules are written, the State Parks is particularly concerned about allowing vehicle access access specifically to permit folks who might not otherwise be able to reach the beach. And the good news is that because of the the good work at the visitor center and the investments that have been made in the chairs that we have there, we actually go quite a ways towards accommodating anybody with mobility issues to get onto the beach safely. And I've talked to Carolyn at the visitor center about it, and she's got some data that will indicate that, you know, no one's coming in asking, can we drive on the beach to get grandma or somebody else down closer to the water? But plenty of people are coming in to take advantage of the chairs that we have. And so I think we can sort of flip that part of the criteria on its head and make the case that you know, we're we're doing what we should do proactively to make beach access more available. We don't need to rely on motor vehicle access to take care of that. The other thing to note related to this topic is that in the safety concerns, I think we should talk and will talk about the demographics of our community. Our community, we recently learned in that first meeting of the Comp Plan Committee, we have a we've all known that our median age is quite high in Manzanita. We have a much higher percentage of people living with a disability than in the state as a whole. So we have a local population that certainly their access to the beach should be promoted and protected, but their safety once on the beach, I think, is paramount. So I think we're going to be pretty pretty good on those first two categories. The third category, honestly, we couldn't, we don't have to say a whole lot. We we have a piece of beach that's locked between Niaconny Mountain and Nahalum Bay State Park. I think it goes without saying that the scenic and recreational values of the beach are obvious and draw people to it on a regular basis. And so I don't, you know, we're not going to have to struggle there. Natural resources is the is the one area that I've I'm having a little bit of, not not a struggle with, but there's a little more science involved that I'm I'm comfortable with. But I'm getting some good help from Ivana Lovina, who's well connected with some folks involved with the Green Reserve that touches the north part of the beach. And I think we'll have something to say on that. My goal is that we have something to say on all five categories. We're certainly not required to, but I think we can and we should. Now, beach management, I think, will have a lot to say. I've been talking with Mike Sims and Sergeant Sims, and, you know, he makes the the point that even though the beach is not Manzanita Police Department's turf, so to speak, the Manzanita Police are the law enforcement agency that's most likely to get called. The sheriff's not going to do much. The state police aren't going to do much. The park rangers aren't going to do much. It's the Manzanita Police to get called. And honestly, when they're on duty, if one guy's on duty, you know, you can't spend time down on the beach chasing around, you know, somebody making donuts with a with a Jeep very easily or efficiently. And so I think that the truth is for the with that exception to be in the in the rule, puts an undue burden on our police to sort of keep up with any problems that arise. And so I think we'll have plenty to say on on that issue.
We have a question from Brad.
Sure.
More of just a couple of comments for the access portion. Seems like the concern is someone may not have as easy access if we no longer allow vehicles. But if we're putting an argument in your documentation, we could certainly talk about the flat access at the bottom of Lenada and that the visitor center has a powered track wheelchair that would allow a handicapped person to access the beach. So just maybe something to mention. And it sounds like you're in good hands with the natural resources with Ivana. But if you hit some blocks or need some more input, we could get you a contact at the Lower Nahalum Community Trust, because I know they've done quite a few proposals and grants and things that would include some similar type of language regarding national resources. So let me know if we need to make that connection, and I'll be happy to do that.
Yeah. So this is probably a good place for me to just say, and we won't go to the next slide just yet, but when we get there, it'll sort of talk about the process from here. But essentially, what I'm hoping we can do is pass a resolution at our January meeting that puts this officially on the the docket of the Parks and Recreation Department when they meet in in February. And so the resolution does not, certainly does not have to make the case in full on all of these categories of criteria. But we do want to at least get out on on the table what our primary concerns are. So I may address natural resources, relying on your contact, Brad, and Ivan and others. I may address that without going into a whole lot of detail, and I'm not going to overstate the issue. I just want to make sure we raise the issue so that when we get to the hearing, we'll be ready to plug in folks to testify on those. Okay, if there aren't any more questions on the criteria, then I think we can
I've got a couple of comments, Jerry. So when you were talking about the safety aspect, you were talking about human safety pretty much exclusively. And so, but you you did say that, you know, you've got people with dogs, but dogs are also endangered by cars being on the beach. Because that's frequently a place where dogs are off-leash. And then you have the potential of horses being spooked on the beach also. And in the summertime, that's when you do see, well, in the in the shoulder, you do see a lot of horses on the beach. On scenic and recreational values, Caroline at the visitor center can probably tell you about the volume of weddings that are conducted on the beach and what kind of an impact that would have, you know, have a car racing past you while you're trying to have your wedding ceremony. And then on natural resources, cars drip gas and oil onto the beach. And so it's a it's an environmental hazard as well.
Yeah. Those are all good points. And actually, Ivana brought up the oil and gas impacts on the sand. Under natural resources, we also have an opportunity to raise issues about wildlife, not we're not talking dogs and horses necessarily, but we can certainly address those under safety. But under natural resources, obviously, we do have wildlife and vegetation. So I I think, you know, we can give them a laundry list of reasons to get rid of this exception. We'll be stronger on some than others. But I just want to make sure when we pull this petition together, excuse me, resolution together, that we we address everything that we hope to bring up at a hearing.
Jerry, just a point of clarification, because I wasn't clear about what was included in beach management. So that is from a law enforcement perspective primarily, or are there other aspects to that?
It's primarily, well, it's yeah, it is. It is about law enforcement in general. I think the way the rules, I mean, I have them here in front of me. I don't want to bore you with the letter of the the rule itself, but it's it's clear that it's talking about enforceability. I mean, if you're going to have a rule, is it enforceable? And, you know, I don't want to put words in Sergeant Sims' mouth, but essentially, you know, he says it's it's not enforceable as a practical matter. They they certainly, on occasions, have to try to enforce it. The problem is that you know, it's hard to devote serious time. And physically, it's hard to get a vehicle down on the beach for the police to address any situations with another vehicle on the beach. So it's a it's an exception that was created years ago. I'm not sure what the police department in Manzanita looked like in nineteen ninety-two, certainly not before that, if the rule came before that. But but I do know that the sheriff is not responding to calls up on Niaconny Beach. I don't think the state police are responding to calls of vehicles on the beach, and I don't think the park rangers are out there. I don't think they they issue citations in general. So really, it has fallen on Manzanita Police. And it's it's it should be taken off their plate. It is. It's a it's a it's an added burden to what they're already dealing with, and their obviously primary responsibility is that citizens and residents actually living in the city, not being on the beach.
Okay, it just strikes me that that fifth area is like it's fifth for a reason. I mean, it's almost like a
It might be.
Yeah, it's not all in priority order, but it's it's kind of a minor thing, and we wouldn't enact a change because we felt the police department was overburdened. That's just a consequence of this other stuff.
No, exactly.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I wasn't missing anything there. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Nancy, can you get us to our last slide? All right. So here's the timeline, and it's pretty straightforward, but there are a couple of asterisks in there, which I'll I'll address. So we, in order to kick off this process, either the local government or a local government that's impacted by the the rule can do so by resolution, or twenty residents of the impacted area can do it by petition. And so we've we've elected to at least consider this resolution route. And I think that we can certainly easily, based on the information I've already gathered and some that's incoming as we speak, we can easily put together a resolution for council to consider at the January ninth meeting. And that would be essentially a resolution asking the Oregon Parks and Recreation Commission to open rulemaking on that particular section of the O A Rs. Now, they only meet, that commission only meets February, April, June, and September. And so we want to get on that February docket. We shouldn't have any problem. I've been told if we pass our resolution January ninth, we're going to be almost a full month ahead of when they pull together the packet for that February twenty-fifth meeting, which is held virtually, so we'll be able to listen in to that meeting. Now, if the commission is persuaded by our our resolution to open up rulemaking, they will basically announce that at the beginning of a month. And my presumption is that it will be announced the beginning of March. I think I think the only reason they wouldn't do it at the beginning of March is if they were chewing on it at the February meeting and there was more information they wanted, or they they, you know, if they just punt it to their April meeting, then the whole process gets slowed down somewhat. But my assumption is they'll open up rulemaking with an announcement in the beginning of March. And at that point, there will be at least a thirty-day public comment period. And there'll also be a public hearing held at least twenty-one days after notice has been given. So I assume the public comment period and the public hearing run concurrently. And so the hearing may precede the close of public comment. But regardless, by their April meeting, I'm assuming they will have conducted the hearing, and they will have closed the public comment period, and they'll be in a position at their April meeting to either adopt a new rule or stick with the status quo. But again, asterisks because theoretically, it could all get pushed out to the June meeting. And honestly, I hope it doesn't. But even if it got pushed out to the September meeting, we would still be lined up for a rule change that would be effective next off-season. So I I think it's wise for us to stay on this track, not to be the source of any delay ourselves. If there's going to be delay in the process, let it be somebody else. So if we can if we can pass a resolution at the January meeting, I I think that's a solid step forward on our part.
Jerry, what do you know about the protocol that will take place in the February meeting? Will you be asked to present the resolution? Is there more than just the resolution that goes in? Do we send in some statement from contiguous jurisdictions like Nahalum?
Yeah. So so thanks for raising that contiguous jurisdictions issue, because I forgot to address that. Let me let me do that really quick. So the the only contiguous jurisdiction involved is the county, actually, because of the unincorporated part of Niaconny that borders the beach. And I did ask the government relations person whether she thought we needed to formally ask them to join us in this petition or resolution. And she did not think so, but I I also thought that as a courtesy, because we're good partners with the county, that we should let them know what was up. And I talked to Leila about that. And Leila reached out to Mary Beth Faith, Mary Faith Bell, excuse me. And she indicated, well, I'll let Leila speak to that, but my understanding is that we're good to go, and the county is well aware of what we're doing. Ironically, even though we are the initiators of this process, one of the last steps in the process is that they're going to actually come back to us and say, if we make this change, do you approve it? So we'll have an opportunity, as will the county on the back end, to approve the rule change after, hopefully, after the State Parks folks adopt it. I don't know much beyond that, Tom, about what goes on at that February twenty-fifth meeting. But I'm I think I'm in good hands. The government relations person so far has been very user-friendly and very helpful. And so I'm essentially, once we get this petition filed, she'll certainly let me know what I need to be doing or what any of us need to be doing at that meeting, other than attended. I know we can attend it because it's virtual. But again, it's not, they're not deciding at that February meeting to change the rule. They're just deciding whether or not to open up this process. So I assume the threshold is is not very high for us to get over. But we'll we'll certainly know that well in advance and be prepared. Okay, well, if there are no other questions, then I I think what I'm going to ask, Leila's given me a soft deadline to get a draft resolution together for her prior to the holidays. So it's ready for the packet before our January ninth meeting. I think I've got enough information how to flesh out what we want to say in the petition. I'm sorry, I keep calling it that, in the resolution. But certainly, if anybody on the call, either on council or listening in, has thoughts about any of those five categories that you want to particularly make sure we raise and flesh out, by all means, let me know. So and this is a process that, you know, we're going to lay it out as as fully as we can in the resolution, but we're not going to do a deep dive on any of them. We'll have ample time before a public hearing is conducted to be prepared to to make our case on all five areas. And it's going to involve, you know, quite a few residents who have been speaking up about this for a while. And so I'm going to hopefully enlist several of them to help testify at the public hearing. Leila, did I get that right from? Leila, did I get that right from, uh, Mary Faith, uttering or butchering your name? Did I get right what she said about?
Yeah, you did.
Good.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments for Jerry or the group?
No, just that that was a fabulous job, Jerry. You really researched it well and, um, looked at it analytically, and I can't imagine that it wouldn't be successful. Thank you for your work on that. It's really
Yeah.
Well, thanks. I, I appreciate that, but it is, uh, it is honestly a pretty straightforward process if we pay attention to the, the wording of the regs, and if we don't stray too far from what those regs are all about, I agree with you. I think the reasons for optimism are, are warranted, uh, so.
Fingers crossed.
Pull, pull this tape out in three months and we'll see how correct we were.
Insight is always generally better than looking forward. So, all right. Well, I want to thank you again.
We got one more question.
Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you. Um, so, um, is this something that we're going to need James's input on, and is there any fiscal impact to, to doing this?
Well, I, uh, I would say we don't need James's, uh, input, uh, in this sense. It's, it's not a process that we, uh, control. I mean, I thought, I think if it was a more complicated process, a more nuanced process, then sure, we would tap the city attorney, but it's, it's honestly a pretty straightforward process, one that, uh, citizens are invited to do by petition, 20 of them. So, uh, essentially, I think, uh, you know, we are taking that, uh, uh, burden off the citizens. We're, we're taking it up ourselves as the elected body, but it seems pretty straightforward to me, and so I, I wouldn't want to incur James's, uh, costs on the front end. And then, uh, as far as fiscal impact, that's a good question. I mean, I, I don't, I, I don't, I don't anticipate a fiscal impact. If anything, I think we're saving money by doing it ourselves, so. I hope.
Or enhancing the viability of Manzanita as a tourist, uh, as, as a tourist location.
Well, yes, but I think, uh, and I wouldn't argue with that characterization of it, but I think we're doing this primarily because, uh, our own residents have said, hey, you know, this is our town. We like to, uh, take advantage of, uh, of the beach, and the off-season is when we perhaps enjoy it the most. So, um, yeah, I think for the benefit of tourists, but also the benefit of, uh, uh, of our residents, it's just a, it's kind of a no-brainer. It's let, it, it's understandable that, uh, when you look at the coast from Astoria down to Brookings, you can think of various places where you'd want to allow, uh, exceptions to the norm and, and therefore allow vehicles on the beach. I don't know that, uh, maybe in 1992 or earlier, our beach seemed like a logical place for limited vehicle access. I don't, I don't really see that that's any longer the case, and so that's all we're trying to establish, that the day-to-day realities of life on our beach in 2025, not in 1992, dictate that vehicles should stay on the road.
And if they issue a citation for somebody having their car on the beach, um, that's going to be like citations that are for parking out on ocean, um, we don't get any portion of the fine?
Uh, I would defer to Sergeant Sims on that, but I mean, honestly, uh, my sense is that one of the problems with enforcement is if, if you, if you, if the answer to, uh, enforcement is, well, you know, if someone is violating the, the rules, you, you cite them and, and, you know, that teaches them a lesson and brings some revenue into the community or some community, that, uh, ignores the fact that it really puts a burden on the cops to spend a lot of time, and then they got to record, so. Uh, I think we're better off with just a prohibition, in which the case, you know, there, there will be a, a locked gate at Treasure Cove that's only, uh, can only be opened by emergency first responders who have, uh, access to the key, or, um, there's, you know, I think, I, I haven't thought about the fiscal impact seriously, but it's, it's certainly not a revenue maker for us to.
No. I would expect that it's, it's an interesting question, but it's a relatively minor point compared to the reason we're doing it, and so, and two, in the end, when people get, if this goes through and citizens support it, and we do the work to get it done with the state park, um, that'll take care of most of the people who go down there now, because they know they can, and it's legal to do it. It will not be, if it's not legal to do it, they won't do it, and anything we have should be really an exceptional basis. And anyway, everything I've learned about our tickets for things and how, what it actually takes to process those tickets means, uh, many revenue, whatever, might be on the, on the extremely minimal side. I think like anything else, it's more from the spirit of your question, Tom, the, the impact is more the, the work that council chooses to focus on this and spend. So we're spending the time on it, and we're putting resources into it, um, even though it's not a, a super onerous sort of load for us to carry, um, it still means we're doing that, which means we're not doing something else. So it's, but I, I think councils are all very comfortable with that, or we wouldn't have proceeded to respond to the citizen complaints and decided to go ahead and figure out the process to do something about it, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fully supportive of moving forward on this. I only asked the question because I think that just about any time we take an action, we should also consider whether it's costing us money, or we're going to gain something, uh, as a result, and I just think it's a, a practical consideration that we have to look at almost every time.
Yes, I agree. Yeah. Okay. Do we have anything else? All right, then thank you, Jerry, for, to use the old Time Warren sports analogy, picking the ball up and running with it on our behalf, and
Actually, Brad Hart handed me the ball, so.
He already had three balls, so I asked Jerry if he could.
Rugby game involves lots of handoffs, but this isn't actually the quality of a rugby game, but still, thank you for the teamwork on it. It's appreciated as always. Okay. Well, with that, at, uh, 2:37, I'm going to call this workshop to a close. Thank you, everyone, and council and staff. Thank you to the citizens who showed up to listen today, and hopefully you will help spread the word about this work with folks you know, so people are more and more aware of this as part of the council's work. So thank you very much. I hope everyone has a great rest of the day.
Thanks, Catherine.
Thank you. You.